It's like, I used to get nervous.
It's fine, it's all fine. We're doing great, sweetie. Oh, Warren, you can start, Jessica.
Professor will not.
Okay, it is five o'clock and it is my pleasure to call the January 12th meeting of the Auburn Planning Commission to Order. We appreciate seeing all of you out here on an uncertain weather day. It speaks well of your interest in your community and we're pleased to have everybody. We'll begin by having the Secretary called Rome.
Dana Camp.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Bob Brittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph Estrop.
Bill Chancellor.
Here.
Again, I really appreciate y'all being here and I want to explain for those who may not have been in any of our meetings in recent past, the way we normally progress on our order of business is that we have, of course, like any others, the old business, but we also have a consent agenda, which is, which contains those items, most of which have been before us before and have gotten preliminary approval, or those that do not require a public hearing are placed on the consent agenda at which we will have the opportunity to vote on as one agenda item. However, any member of the board can ask to have a consent agenda item removed so that we can have further discussion. But our normal discussion proceeds on items is that the staff will make a presentation on each of the petitions and explain the staff report that we have before us, and then the developer will be given an opportunity, he or she or their representative, to also bring more information before the group. Most of our items require a public hearing, and at that time, we will open the public hearing to allow anyone who wishes to address issues or questions or make some points regarding that agenda item. We would ask anybody who want to hear from everybody that wants to speak. However, we ask everyone to keep their presentation or comments to five minutes or less. In addition to that, as the public hearing may go on, we may be, many may have the same concerns and be speaking the same reasons, and if that's the case, we'd like to see a little bit more conciseness and, and just make sure that we don't repeat the same thing over and over because we will have already have gotten your message. We do care about what you say, we listen to everything that is said, but our job is to make our decisions based on a number of variables to include public opinion, but also the state, federal, and case law that relates to land use and property rights. In addition to that is our responsibility. Neither of us represent a segment of the community. We do not have a constituency except the city. We must look at all sides of the issue, and also we have to consider personal, private property rights. So after those presentations, we go into our deliberation, get to ask more questions of the staff, and then we will call for a motion. There's a slight difference in the way we handle subdivisions than the way we handle zoning issues. The subdivisions, this, this body is responsible solely by the legislate, legislature for the oversight of subdivisions. The Planning Commission writes the subdivision regulations, which are also approved by the city council after public hearing processes, but once it is approved, and we do have a good standard set of subdivision regulations that contain the technical information on how subdivisions can be and must be subdivided in order to transfer title of land. That is a very technical review, so we have very little latitude in subdivision review other than to making sure that the subdivisions meet the requirements specified in our subdivision regulations. So with those comments, I think we will open our meeting by allowing anyone that's here speak to any issue that is not on the agenda. If you have an item related to planning and land use in the city and you wish to bring it to our attention, this is the time to do it. However, if it's about a specific item that's on the agenda, we will hear from you at that time. Anyone wish to make any, create any communications at this time? If not, we'll move on to our first order of old business, or our only order of old business, and will staff refresh our memories on that item, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a item that was postponed from your December meeting to allow applicant time to provide a renewed exhibit showing what their intent for the property is. If you recall, the property is outside of the city limits, but in the optimal boundary. The minimum lot size for subdivision is three acres, and they've, have a little less than six acres for the total property, so they're requesting a waiver to that minimum lot size of about a quarter of an acre to have two lots, one of those lots being less than three acres. Does not meet the criteria for staff to recommend approval. However, the applicant may be able to give you more information about what their desires are for the property. Happy to answer any questions. I would state this is the minimum amount of a waiver that would be needed to make that subdivision possible.
Thank you, Logan. Is the petitioner present tonight? Would you like to?
Yes, sir. I'm Mark Tippins, the attorney for the petitioner, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to indulge you again, and for purposes of reiteration, the survey we had last time we came in December literally divided that top tract one into two, two divisions, which was an incorrect drawing, and I apologize profusely. Thank you for allowing me to come back before you again. This land, just under six acres, is, is owned by Amanda Richards, who her mother owned this property for many, many years, and it, and it was and is still in the county, but within the purview of the commission. Therefore, Mr. Randy Bodie, B-O-D-D-I-E, as a, if I can be redundant, he, he lives in Camden Ridge. I'm trying to think of subdivision. He lives in Camden Ridge, and he has a tree cutting service, and he wants to be able to build a small, kind of a, little bit more than a pole barn, but not an official shop or anything where there's going to be any oils or greases stored, but he does want to build some kind of metal structure or some, something of the, of the like to put his tractor and his equipment in there because he certainly can't continue to keep it in his driveway at Camden Ridge, and it, and he's been storing it outdoors, rather, it's somebody else's property, but he wants to build a, you know, a roof structure to keep his equipment out of the rain and the elements when he's not using it. Hope, he intends probably to add a bathroom, just a toilet and a sink at some point in the future. Does not intend to develop this for any residential purpose, but there is an existing residence on tract two in, in, in the map that you have before you. And again, he does not intend on doing any residential development on this at all and would even be glad to enter into some sort of professional covenant with the city if, if they were to allow this. He wants to use it again strictly and solely for purpose of his, his tree, tree business, and hopefully that the city will one day annex this as well. Any, any questions, I'd be glad to entertain.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Tippins, appreciate that.
May, may I say something on the side here? I want to really commend these folks in, in the planning department that are so utterly polite and good. It is just, it was such a pleasant welcome to deal with a, a young man who is just so polite and went bent over backwards, so I want to brag on Logan.
Appreciate the love.
I hope I'm embarrassing him too, by the way, but I want to brag on what a polite young man he was.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, we've already had the public hearing on this, so is there any, well, is there a public hearing on this? Well, there is, I'm sorry. We, we didn't, I guess since it's a modified, we'll, we will open the public hearing, and is there anyone here wishes to address this particular waiver request? If not, we'll close the public hearing and then offer the staff an opportunity to discuss. Anything? Is there anyone prepared for a motion?
I'll move to approve the waiver.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the waiver. Is there any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. So the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda, and will the staff review the items in the consent agenda for us?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, tonight on the consent agenda, you have just a few items. Number, well, it's not a number, but you have the approval of the minutes from the packet meeting of December 5th, as well as the regular meeting of December 8th, and then you have two final plats. The Sadler subdivision, which is a six lot performance subdivision with six townhome lots on North de Bartleben Street, and then the final plat for the landing at Academy Drive. That's a 38 lot conventional subdivision. That's the extent of that agenda for tonight.
Okay, is there any, anyone wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? If not, is-
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve. Is it seconded?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the packet, December 5th packet meeting and the regular meeting on December the 8th, and the two items related to fighter plants. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. New business. The next, the first item under new business is a preliminary plant for West Pace Village. Hear that one now.
This is a request for a preliminary plat approval of a conventional subdivision consisting of six lots. The property is located at West Pace Boulevard in West Creek Parkway and just south of Interstate 85. As you can see on the proxy map, all the property within West Pace Village is zone plan, planned development district with a base zoning of comprehensive development district. And on the plat here, you can see, that's one hotel there, two hotel there, and that's the feature U-Haul site. And again, the request for approval is to re-divide eight lots of record into a six lot, so conventional subdivision for future development, and the plat meets all subdivision regulations, and I've also spoken with economic development, and they have no concerns. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay.
Are there any conditions of note?
Yes, we would like the street to be included with the lots.
The West Creek Parkway?
Yes, and West Pace Boulevard.
West Pace Boulevard, also, yeah. Okay. All right. Is the, anyone representing the petitioner wish to speak anymore? Okay. All right, well, this requires a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wish to ask questions, raise, or raise issues related to this proposal? I hear none, so I'll close the public hearing, and is there any discussion or further information the board would like? If not, is there anyone?
I'll move to approve, KSPP 2023001.
Subject- With conditions?
Subject to all the conditions.
Subject to all the conditions.
Subject to all the conditions. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself for the next two items.
All right. Let the record note that Mr. Wisdom is accusing himself for items five and six on the agenda, and we will then take up the item of Kent property. Kent property, LDD rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Logan?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Geniality.
This is one of two rezoning requests for a property located at 801 Ogle Tree Road. The first request is to rezone the property from rural to LDD, and the second request is to apply planned development district to the property. These are two requests, and will have to be voted on separately, but I did want to present the information for both for the benefit of everybody to have all the information. The property is, consists of a little over 34 acres and is in the Winway subdivision. It has frontage along Ogle Tree Road here, and a stubout along Kentwood Drive also connects to it. The property is zoned rural, and a small portion of it is within the Lake Ogle Tree watershed. To the north is zone DDH and PDD. To the south is in unincorporated Lee County with no zoning, and to the east is NC 150, and to the west is rural and NC 84. Here is a survey of the property, and here is the master development plan that the applicant has provided. The applicant recently acquired the property and is wanting to subdivide the land into 15 conventional single-family lots and one non-buildable outlaw, excuse me. The proposal would be to extend the public right-of-way for Kentwood Drive into the site, and the lots would take access from that new right-of-way. Lots four, five, and six would take access from Ogle Tree Road, and all lots would be at least two acres in size except for the outlaw, which is about 1.4 acres, and municipal water and sanitary sewer would be provided to the sites. So as a large lot, low-density, conventional, single-family development, the proposal does meet the standards for neighborhood preservation, future land use designation, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezoning to LDD with the understanding that, that a recommendation is based on the proposal you see here. Staff recommends approval to apply the PDD overlay to the property with the following conditions, which would be binding if approved by council. The first condition is that a additional outlaw or open space area be provided along Morse Mill Creek. That area consists of a large amount of floodplain, and essentially to provide an area or enhancement for the neighborhood and to help preserve the creek. Condition number two, a maximum of two driveways would be permitted along Ogle Tree Road, which is consistent with what's shown here. Condition three is that the only permitted use in the development shall be single-family detached homes, and condition four is that all lots shall be a minimum of two acres in size with the exception of the outlaw. So we have received a lot of correspondence on these requests that are in opposition to the rezoning. So do you have some additional information I can present to you now or wait till after the public hearing?
I have a quick question related to the requirement that a, I think you said a separate outlaw be created. Is there, would that still leave plenty of, okay, that is the creek part, that still would be, enable lot 15 and 12 to remain at its minimum of two acres?
It would. Lot 15 is slightly over two acres, and lot 12 is 3.4 acres about. So they could potentially take land out of those and either, there's some creative solutions they could look at to either combine it with the existing outlaw and make that one two acres, or they could make an additional outlaw. There, there's some solutions there that they can look at.
All right. Okay, thank you, Logan. Is the petitioner wish to make any comments at this time regarding?
Sure. Brett Bass, Win Forside Group, representing the applicant, just want to make a few comments and clarifications. So, you know, at packet meeting, I think Mr. McCord did a great job of summarizing kind of the, what the NC zoning was, come about from, you know. I think there's, you know, from reading some of the letters and, and stuff from the adjacent property owners and stuff, you know, I think, you know, I think it's important to note that the NC zoning wasn't created as a new zoning, that that was applied to existing neighborhoods back when we did a master rezoning in the 80s and changed our zoning ordinance. You know, wasn't intended for a new zoning districts. You know, we do have other zoning districts, and those other zoning districts have stipulations that protect the adjacent neighbors, you know, through the zoning ordinance. You know, we are aware of the deed restrictions and will abide by them. You know, I know there's a lot of that stuff in there. You know, not only does the deed restriction stipulate single-family residential dwellings, our, the fact that we're doing a PDD further does that, as well as the additional conditions of it being single-family. So I don't think that there's any issue there. You know, in order to get to the PDD, we got to go through some form of a zone to get there. We're going through LDD because LDD is a limited development district. The LDD zoning was primarily created to protect the Lake Ogle Tree watershed, so it's one of the, it has the most restrictions in it of all, of most of all of our zoning districts. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that it's crystal clear that, you know, we're going through an LDD to get to a PDD, but the LDD zone is what we have on our Lake Ogle Tree watershed to restrict development. I know there's some confusion that, you know, we could potentially turn this into a commercial development. In the LDD zoning, you can't have commercial development unless you're in a neighborhood shopping center, and you can't have a neighborhood shopping center unless you're at the corner of two arterial roads. So right now, Ogle Tree Road is not an arterial road, it's a collector, and all the other roads around there are all local residential streets, so there, there are no two arterials to create a neighborhood shopping center for a commercial, for any commercial uses, and that's any commercial uses. That's even office. If you try to do office in the LDD, you have to be in a neighborhood shopping center. I think we've all gone through that on Hamilton Place behind Publix, right? We all remember that. So I just wanted to make that, and, and this is more of informative, trying to inform the neighbors too of, of some of the, you know, thought process behind this. In regards to the PDD conditions, you know, the LDD conditions are fine, and the PDD conditions, I just want to talk about two of them. In the PDD conditions, it's a little different this time. I haven't seen this before, but in the PDD conditions, we do have, you know, conditions, and then we have additional conditions, okay? And so what I want to talk about first is in the regular conditions for approval. It talks about the open space lot next to the creek. You know, in, in Auburn, we have, we have, you know, we have performance zoning and, which requires open space, but then if you just do a regular subdivision, it doesn't require open space. You know, us subdividing into two-acre lots, you know, it's more of a large lot rural subdivision. We typically wouldn't have open space in that type of development. We do have a lot of floodplain, and we have creeks, and we have streams, and we have wetlands, and we have all kinds of stuff on this property that we're preserving and, and, and working around. Ideally, we carved out this outlaw because it's on the other side of the creek, and we figured that nobody would want to have ownership over there on that side. If we had to add more open space, it would go along the creek and be behind lots 15 and 12. I just think in a large lot subdivision, having open space next to a creek that's in floodplain and in wetlands and is unusable for anybody, people really wouldn't want that in their backyard. So we, we would prefer not to have it. If, if y'all feel like we need it, and you feel like open space is needed for two-acre lots, you know, you know, we'll live with it, but we would, the preference would be not to have that. That way, lot 15 and lot 12 would be responsible for everything to have up to the creek, not that the HOA would have to maintain some form of trails or anything like that through there. So that's, that's the one condition, like I said. The second condition is in that additional conditions where it talks about extending Kentwood up to Ogle Tree Road as, as a city recommendation. You know, we don't, we would, we prefer not to have that. We think having Kentwood cul-de-sac in with these lots taking, the lots fronting Ogle Tree, taking direct access is more in line with what Ogle Tree is like along there. The two curb cuts that we're having on there, we're utilizing the existing curb cut for the property on one, and the other two lots will share another one, and that's fine. We're just trying to maintain the character along there with taking direct access off of there, and then the other part of that is, you know, if, if, if Kentwood was connected up to Ogle Tree, it would just become a cut through, through Winway. Winway right now is already loaded with traffic circles and speed humps. If, if Kentwood was extended through there, you know, you're going to be cutting off a traffic circle and a speed hump, and I just think it's going to be cut through traffic that I don't think is, is needed for the few lots that are on here. So that's, that's why we really would prefer to leave it per the master plan like we have it and, and have it as a cul-de-sac. Other than that, be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure we'll have some more once the residents speak. Thank you.
Okay, now is the time. We will open the public hearing and invite anyone that wishes to address this issue to come forward. We also ask you to state your name and address, and before you return to your seat, sign, forgot to sign in. Where is the, yeah, right there on the end of the table.
Sign in. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Charlie Anderson. I am a homeowner with my wife Linda at 771 Ogle Tree. That's in the first lot five of the first edition of the Winway subdivision. I'm here wearing two hats today. First hat's property owner. My second hat is a lawyer. I've been practicing in Montgomery for 37 years, and my role today, I hope, is not adversarial or litigious, but is a community effort to try to find a way we can resolve a development request, which we generally, I don't think you'll hear from our citizens that we- request, which we generally, I don't think you'll hear from our citizens that we generally don't oppose the subdivision. We just don't like this legal term. I'm more use loosey goosey, LDD-PDD way of getting there. We have covenants. My wife and I, I've lived in Montgomery all my life, practiced law there 38 years. My wife and I found ourselves as empty nesters. And four years ago, we came to the promised land. We're one of those many immigrants from I-85 and I continue to commute. But what we found in Windway was particularly valuable to us as homeowners, investors or whatnot, because we had a rural community within the city limits of Auburn, which was fabulous and we love it. All our neighbors love it. We have covenants that are strong and we don't ignore and we don't in any way want to waive our right to enforce those if we have to if the zoning, rezoning ends up ultimately being something less than what we would want. We're kind of a unified voice. I have a petition here I'm going to present. One petition is from all of the owners of the original Windway plat with the covenants in there. And I've got one for every chairman, everyone. And that second one includes not just the original, and there are eight lots in the original plat. Lot number two is owned by the developer who's the petitioner here and obviously we don't have their signature, but we have seven of eight signatures there. And petition two is our petition that includes neighbors in the second edition of Windway as well as those around Windway in the immediate vicinity, including our newest neighbor, the Jackson family, everybody's talking about their house on Ogletree. But anyway, we oppose the PDD/LDD. We think there's a way that we can in harmony live with our neighbors and live with this developer in such a way that doesn't go through this process and we think there are some ways we could address that. But I want to now yield the floor to Mr. Glenn Glover.
Before you step down, Mr. Anderson, define loosey goosey for me, I'm not sure I understand.
Loosey goosey is...
Is that a legal term or just?
It is, it is. And it means that, yes, we see what you say, but we also know the outcome could be different down the road. It's a little loosey goosey.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to voice our opinions. My name is Glenn Glover. My wife and I reside at 861 Ogletree Road, which is lot number one of Windway subdivision, first addition, immediately adjacent to and east of the proposed subdivision. We purchased our lot in 1978 and have lived on the property since 1984. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowners of Windway subdivision, both first and second additions and other neighbors along Ogletree Road who have an interest in this matter. We value your time and we have chosen to have three homeowners speak tonight. And then if there are other homeowners who wish to speak after that, then they can come forward, but we will address some issues with the three speakers. I would like to, not everyone could come out tonight because of the weather and other things, but I'd like those that are here from Windway subdivision and adjacent homeowners in Ogletree to please stand up for a moment just to show you, thank you, that there is obviously great interest and a lot of solidarity here. We as a neighborhood are in opposition to this zoning request. I understand that at the packet meeting, there was a comment to the effect that this proposed subdivision is a new neighborhood. That is far from the truth. Lot number two of Windway subdivision, first addition, is and will remain a part of Windway subdivision. It is not an adjacent piece of property that happens to be next to our subdivision. It is a part of our subdivision. I expect everyone in the subdivision knew that at some point in time, this property would be divided. And we're not necessarily, again, as Charlie said, we're not necessarily opposed to that, but we do want to ensure that a division maintains the feel and integrity of the existing subdivision. As you said, it's very unique in the city of Auburn. And this was a feel that was envisioned by Mr. Tommy Dice when he created that subdivision in 1976. Mr. Dice also foresaw that this lot would likely be subdivided at some point in time and he made accommodations for that. I know the commission nor the city of Auburn enforced covenants, but for your information, Mr. Dice included the following in the covenants, and I quote, "As to lot number two of said subdivision, such lot shall maybe subdivided into smaller lots of not less than two acres upon a plat to be approved by the Auburn Planning Commission. And thereafter, each such new lot to be subject to all the restrictions herein set forth, including this restriction on lot area." And we take that two acre minimum lot to mean all lots, not all buildable lots. Excuse me. Furthermore, the covenant states, "No building shall be located on any lot nearer than 150 feet from the front lot line or nearer than 50 feet to the side lot line. No dwelling shall be located nearer than 40 feet any one side to any interior lot line. As stated in the previous provision, each such new lot is subject to all restrictions herein set forth." Several homeowners are prepared to enforce these subdivision covenants using legal means if necessary. Excuse me. My lot is zone NC 150, as in all the lots in Corbett subdivision, just at the east and north. All of Windway, second addition, is zoned NC 84. In addition, all lots along the north side of Ogletree, extending to the entrance of Old Country Road and then Springwood subdivision and Twin Creek subdivision are zoned NC. In meeting with Mr. Jimmy Cleveland, I asked specifically why NC zone was not being pursued. Mr. Cleveland stated to me and Beth Stewart that the city of Auburn discouraged NC designation in favor of more performance based zoning such as LDD and PDD. Email Mr. Steve Foote and a reply from him to me, he stated, I quote, "To my knowledge, no one at the city recommended that the applicant or property owner pursue the LDD zoning with a PDD overlay. I believe that one of our initial meetings staff has suggested the NC district as an option." In a follow-up email from Mr. Logan Kip, principal planner, he stated, I quote, "The neighborhood preservation designation in the comprehensive plan recommends existing density and housing types should be retained. And our recommendation and analysis of zoning request that has been applied to mean that a new development in an established area should meet the context of the surrounding neighborhood. In an initial meeting with the applicant, staff recommended that an NC zone and slightly larger lots would be the most appropriate scenario. That said, staff must review the application as on request as they have been submitted and base our recommendation to the planning committee, planning commission, excuse me, on those criteria." In a phone call to Mr. Cleveland last Sunday, I again asked, "Why not NC zoning?" His response at this time was that he needed PDD to have more flexibility in locating building house sites. For the NC 84 zone, in anything larger than that, as I understand, the front setback is 45 feet, rear is 50, sides is a total of 40 with no less than 18 on one side. We have difficulty understanding how that could be a presenter problem on a two acre lot, maybe a smaller lot, but not on a two acre lot. As noted, the Windway covenants, Windway subdivision covenants, first addition, are more restrictive than the NC zone. At the packet meeting on Monday, Mr. Steve Foote also said that the developer had chosen LDD to provide larger buildable footprint. However, in the COP 2030 featured land use plan, all of Windway subdivision is designated as neighborhood preservation. Preservation would seem to dictate that new lots would have the same buildable footprint as existing lots in the subdivision. Seeking a larger buildable footprint is incompatible with the preservation of the existing character of Windway subdivision. Given the average lot size of the other sublots in the first edition of Windway is 4.25 acres and that's removing this lot, of course. And the average lot size in Windway second edition is over three acres. It seems reasonable that if lot number two is subdivided, it should receive an NC 150 at minimum to meet the existing density as specified in COP 2030. The packet also identifies DDH and PDD as surrounding land use on page 37 in a table. It should be noted that this zoning occurs only at the northeast corner of lot two, consists of about 340 feet or about 6% of the total perimeter of lot two, whereas NC 50 is 34%, NC 84 38% and rural 10%. They compromise a total of 82% of the surrounding perimeter. Given the new lots from the subdivision of lot two are a part of Windway subdivision first addition, we believe it is inappropriate to assign an LDD zone with all the myriad conditional uses that come with that designation, even with a PDD overlay. We understand that applicants must follow the contract, quote unquote, that is outlined in the PDD, but that is in the near term. I have been in Auburn over 50 years and at many times, too many times, seen how owners' goals and land use change and I'm putting that nicely. And a good example, I just heard that could not put neighborhood shopping centers except at the junction arterial roads and Ogletree is not an arterial road. Guess what? The Clintons have developed a neighborhood shopping center at the junction of Moores Mill Road and Ogletree Road. By that definition, that neighborhood shopping center should not be there. My neighbors now fear that at some point in the future, the LDD designation could come back to haunt us and that is not an appropriate zoning assignment in the middle of an existing residential neighborhood to an existing lot that is part of a subdivision and is also adjacent to other subdivision that are zoned NC or rural. We believe the zoning does not provide adequate protection to surrounding neighbors and homeowners in the long run and sets a dangerous precedent to allow LDD, PDD or similar zoning to a lot in an existing residential subdivision or creating a quote unquote new neighborhood with a higher density housing within an existing subdivision. We strongly feel that Windway subdivision and the neighborhood in general and all neighbors along Ogletree Road would be better protected and better served if the proposal is denied or if proposal would be withdrawn by the applicants or tabled by the commission with the applicants coming back to the planning commission with an NC zoning request that meets all existing subdivision covenant restrictions. We believe that avenue could save everyone a lot of headaches and conflict and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I would then like to yield the floor to Mr. Clay Corman.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to let you know that, of course, you had the five minute timer going. I don't know if you heard it or not, so we did exceed it with that regard. So I wasn't sure if you caught that or not, just FYI. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll contribute some of my time. I'll keep it brief. So my name, I'm Clay Corman. I live at 901 Ogletree Road with my beautiful wife Jessica that's here with me and our three boys. And I'm here on behalf of the neighbors that are concerned with the zoning request. And following up just some of the points that Glenn made, we absolutely agree with all of those and just some additional thoughts in terms of considering the request here to have an LDD zoning with a PDD overlay. The first is, Mr. Basquen made an interesting comment that I took note of in that they talked about the preservation of the wetlands in the natural area that exists. The master plan, essentially the back eight and a half acres of this lot, you can see where the division is, is all wetlands and a floodplain. And they're proposing four lots, three of which the four they're saying are buildable smack dab in the middle of what they're wanting to preserve. So when you talk about preservation, I think that that's kind of crazy, to be honest with you, when you talk about building in the middle of them. Further, those, we feel this plan is unbuildable. It's not even a feasible plan. In order to build on lots 15, 12 and 11 and then 16 is impossible and it violates the deed restrictions already at 1.4 acres. But just focusing on 15, 12 and 11, those lots, there is significant elevation change. They're smack dab in the middle of floodplain, they're wetlands. It would require all sorts of permitting from FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, figuring out how to do wetlands mitigation to even get back there and build. The feasibility of doing that is extremely unlikely. Anyone would go to that amount of cost and that amount of time to try to build those lots. So we look at it and we come to the conclusion that the master plan is presented will have to be altered because it's not buildable. Further, there are already flooding issues that have been associated with this area. In fact, in 2000, the city of Auburn had to repurchase a lot 17 of Windway that was flooded because it was in the same floodplain at the same elevation as lots 11, 12 and 15. So it seems like you'd be repeating the same mistake if you go and put lots smack dab in a floodplain again right over this. But beyond those issues about the joke of using the word preservation, the real issue, I think it's pretty natural. Look, to the east and west, you have NC 84 and NC 150. Why would you do anything else that wasn't consistent with that that surrounds it? The planning commission is obviously on record and believes that NC 84 was, the planning commission staff was in congrants that NC 84 was most appropriate. I don't know why we would skew from that. We clearly know why the developer wants the LDD with PDD overlay and that is clearly because they want to try to get more flexibility with lesser setbacks. All of the surrounding neighbors have abided by these setbacks. There's no reason that the developer should get special privileges and get to play by a new set of rules that no one else has had, that we've all had to play by the rules. And they're trying to alter it and to make it to where their setbacks are much less restrictive by going this route. I think it's a dangerous precedent if you start doing this on this side, especially in Ogletree Road. There are obviously lots of other large lots where this type of strategy at rezoning, LDD with PDD overlay could start happening. And I think it would be a shame on this side of town, on the Ogletree corridor, to open up this precedent to encourage other developers to considering a similar type approach. So I would very much like to see the commission at least do one of two things tonight. Number one, reject or make a recommendation to city council to reject the request. Or number two, at least delay any, making any recommendation to gather further information and allow this to have more time to be discussed. And on that point, the neighbors, we are not unreasonable and that we fully expect that this would be developed. And if you eliminate the back half of this plan, if you eliminate lots 11, 12, 15 and 16, I think that the neighbors and I think that they could generally get behind this lot and be in support of it under an NC 84 zoning, which NC 84 zoning should allow them to do exactly what they want to do with the subtraction of the back lots that are in the wetlands. And we are more than happy to sit down with the developer and any of the commission staff and to try to work out some reasonable agreement on to how to proceed. We want that under the premise of NC 84, but there might even be the ability to have some exceptions.
Your time is called.
All right. Thank you.
Are there anyone else?
Yes, I've signed in. I'm Brett Peterson. I know some of you all, good to see you. I'm a longtime resident of 780 Kentwood Drive, been there about 30 years. And in interest of full disclosure, I'm also an employee of the city of Auburn. I don't have any responsibilities related to planning, I'm in Parks and Recreation. But first of all, I'd just like to support my neighbors who've already come up here and talked about the zoning. That is the fundamental concern that we have is the zoning. And I would, again, support the idea that NC 84 seems like the right, the right set of zoning for this area. The only other comments I'd like to make, and again, some of my neighbors have asked me to come and speak to this, has to do with access. And when we say that, we can see on the plan up here, the access that comes through from Kentwood and goes in. Another possibility we'd like to consider or like to have considered is access from Ogletree. In other words, direct access into this plan and then out again on Ogletree. The other thing that I would comment on as well is, we support this idea if it needs to be this way with the access coming through Kentwood, but we absolutely are concerned about a thoroughfare through that subdivision. We're concerned about the character of the subdivision. We all, a lot of us walk in the subdivision, we spend time on the roads, on our bicycles or walking. And we're concerned about if we punch through from Ogletree all the way onto Kentwood that we're with the school, with the plan for the new, I think there's a new facility that Parks and Recreation will have down at the other end of Kentwood. Then we're going to have a lot of traffic through there and it's going to absolutely change the character of the neighborhood. So our preference would be from Ogletree into the subdivision. If not that, then we would support this, this access coming through Kentwood. And let me also say to support... say to support some of the things my neighbors have said is, we understand that there's going to be likely a development here. We support that. We want to welcome these new neighbors to the community, but we don't want it to come in with the PDD/LDD. We believe that the NC 84, and not just myself, but most of my neighbors here, we believe the NC 84 is right for that area. Y'all have any questions of me?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If there's no other comments, we will close the public hearing, and we will open up the time for discussion among the planning commission. Would you like more information from staff? Would the staff like to respond to any of those comments?
Mr. Chairman, I probably should have mentioned this in the packet meeting on Monday, but I think it's appropriate now as well, which is, there's been a lot of talk about the NC 84. Of course, 84 is 84,000 square feet, which is not sufficient for two-acre lots. And so it would have to be actually NC 90 to comply with the covenants if that was what was being talked about, just FYI.
Brett, would you like to address the question about, or the comments about why? Do you feel like you've already done that?
No, I'm sorry.
Basquin.
My apologies, Brett Peterson. Thank you.
In regards to, to which one, which one do you want me to address, or do you want me to?
Well, the biggest one, apparently, which is why not the, why not some NC instead of the LDD?
In the, in the, in the covenants, there are restrictions on setbacks, and we'll abide by them. That's, we've said that the whole time, that we would abide by them. So I don't know what, what, what the concern is there. In regards to loosey-goosey in changing it, the, the PDD overlay is the most restrictive thing that we got here, because it basically says that we can only do what's on this plan. Any major change from this has to go through, back to you guys and be approved, what's deemed a major revision by the planning director. So, you know, this is the most restrictive way of handcuffing us into doing exactly what we're saying that we're doing from, from that perspective. In regards to, you know, why we chose the, the PDD route compared to NC, I mean, the, the biggest change, the biggest difference in them is your rear setback on your, on your NC zoning. Your, your rear setback on your NC zoning is 50 feet. In our, in the restrictive covenants, your front setback's 150 feet. So, you know, all these houses are basically being pushed back against their adjacent neighbors, okay? And, and, and so, you know, the flexibility is more of with your rear setback than it is with your front or side setbacks is the major difference in regards to those. But, you know, let, let me, I'll be clear on, let me be clear on one thing. This outlaw is, is, we can absorb this outlaw and put it in 12 and 15, if that's what's deemed that an outlaw, you know, goes with the covenants, which I know is outside of y'all's deal, but we were just trying to prevent an issue from arising before. But, but, but that would not be a problem. In regards to the floodplain and wetlands, the floodplain and wetlands are on lots 11, 12, and 15, but our developable area is outside of those. So we've already, we've already looked at this. Really, we've already submitted some, basically, design plans showing the water sewer street layouts and how all this is working to the city. So we know that we have a plan that works. We know that we have a plan that works with two acres, which is what we've said we were going to do. And then, before I misspoke when I talked on the neighborhood shopping center, let me just clarify. I said arterial. It's, it's an arterial or collector. Ogle Tree is a collector, okay? But there's, you know, essentially Kentwood is not a collector. You know, there's no other road that's going to bypass this to where this would be a major intersection, like Moores Mill and Ogle Tree. So I just wanted to clarify that point. I did say arterial, and I meant to say collector. So I apologize for that. Any other questions?
I've got, I've got a question. So when we talk, the way I have understood, going from NC, NC to PDD, LDD had to do with the setbacks were a primary consideration.
Yeah, the rear setback, yeah.
So are you, while it's not in our purview to consider covenants and what setbacks they may establish, is that part of the decision that you needed to have LDD to also accommodate the, the covenants requirement of a certain setback? Or was that kind of immaterial?
No, it's immaterial. It's immaterial. I mean, really, the covenants restrictions are more restrictive than the city requirements, for the most part, for most setbacks.
Okay. But you were going to voluntarily go along with that, if, as part of having an LDD?
Yeah, yeah. We, we have to do the covenants, no matter what, no matter what zoning we have here, we have to abide by the covenants. We're not, nobody, we're not disputing the covenants and we'll abide by the covenants.
Let me, let me ask it a different way then. So can you still abide by what's going on the covenants if it's an NC designation with respect to setbacks?
You can, you can abide by the covenants in, in either, I mean, in any of the zoning. I mean, really, abiding by the covenants and those setbacks, as long as you've got two-acre lots, you're pretty much going to be able to abide by the covenants, because there's, they have a minimum front setback, and they have minimum side setbacks in, in their covenants. And that's what, that's what's driving a lot of that. And, and those setbacks are greater than the cities in both NC 84 and in LDD.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody make a comment to, to answer some of these, or to respond to some of these things? It is, I think the developer's been quoted as saying that the city encouraged him to apply to PDD. I don't know what this staff encouraged or discouraged. I know that the city in the past has often encouraged developers of large tracts to submit a PDD, particularly when they're going to develop the land in phases, because that then provides certainty. The PDD must be abided by. It becomes a zone. So the encouragement may have come from previous encounters with the city on other proposals by this developer. I do not know. Another thing that NC is something that is kicked around a lot. If you go back and look into our definition of neighborhood conservation, it was placed there, and it's been changed to some degree, but when the original ordinance was written, the NC was overlaid, if you will, on those existing neighborhoods, those existing subdivisions, who, at the time of the old ordinance, had all kinds of different labels having to do with R1, R2, R4, and all that sort of thing. And when that was changed from Euclidean zoning to this performance-based zoning, we created, in order to protect the existing neighborhoods who would not know what the new zones we were placing on it at that time. So to provide them certainty, we created an NC zone, which is to, for the single-family, single-detached neighborhoods. But it also says, in here, we even have that included, it is a preliminary, it is also intended to provide for future development when NC is deemed the most appropriate zoning classification, and a preliminary or final plat for development of the land has been approved by the planning commission, which means then that it has to be already a platted subdivision before it becomes an NC. We have made, in some years past, since the development of the ordinance, made some new NCs, but it was on established subdivisions already, and usually built out. So to, to place a NC on raw land is not, I don't think we've done that. I cannot recall the time we've done that. We may have, but it's been very rare, because it has to be a neighborhood before it becomes a neighborhood conservation district. But PDD provides the same thing in terms of certainty, because that PDD becomes the zone that must be, be followed. So, for instance, back to the NC, it's conceivable that someone could come in, the people, once they habitat, habitate these houses, buy and live in these houses, that they themselves could come in and petition to be an NC, because they are an established neighborhood. But that's what the NC was originally intended to do, I think. But anyway, with that background, for whatever it's worth.
I'd also like to, for some clarification, maybe from staff on an issue here. So one of the comments was, you know, if we did LDD, did a PDD on an LDD zoning, it might come back to haunt us. So can anybody give us a little bit of, you know, what-ifs on that? Because the way, you know, the way I've understood it over the years here is that, once you put a PDD on a zone, nothing can change from that original plan until it comes back to this body and we readdress it. So how, other than, you know, I'm, because, you know, as Chair mentioned, you know, we can build this out in whatever zone we want. We could come back and change it into NC. You know, there's, you can always change the zoning over time. That's what this process is all about. But, but is there anything that would be a surprise, other than, I mean, it comes to us if somebody wants to change it, period?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there's a significant change, and there's a section in, in the code that describes when you're modifying a, a PDD, and actually, it's talked about, I think, the next item on the agenda, Winway request. And, and it has an A through E. I can't quote them to you right now, but there are a number of items in there that it talks about. And if it meets those thresholds, then it's a substantial change. You know, if you're adding density, if you're reducing open space, there's things of that nature in there. And so, yes, that would mean that you have to submit a new application, change of uses. Yeah, it talks about changes of use from single-family. And, and these are all single-family lots by definition and condition. So if you wanted to change from that to something else, plus the fact that one of the conditions of approval says that all that will be contained here in is single-family detached, and the word detached, we're proposing that you add that to that condition, just for clarification. But, so that would require an application to be submitted to the planning staff to come before you for a recommendation to the city council. You'd have to go back to the city council, and that's the process. It, it's not impossible, but it would be an uphill change, you know, significant change to what's proposed tonight.
Are there anyone else?
I've got a quick question. Engineering staff is saying, recommending connecting Kentwood Drive to Ogle Tree, but I think Brett said that it really wasn't a good idea. So can somebody explain to me what, why it would not be a good idea? Maybe engineering staff?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's a good idea. We are proponents of connectivity, and we have been for several years. We actually made the same recommendation when the adjacent development fairway was extended, was done. So it's more about connectivity for us and getting more than one way in and out of an, an access point.
I've got a question then, on that. One of the gentlemen that spoke said he would rather see it connected to Ogle Tree entrance and exit from Ogle Tree and nothing through Kentwood. What is your thoughts on that?
My, my preference would be both, actually. Kentwood's been stubbed out to this property for many, many years, so having the redundancy to the existing Kentwood off of Winway, as well as off of Ogle Tree into Kentwood, would provide additional circulation.
And I have one other question. Lot 11, 12, and 15, I guess, they're not flag lots. Is, I, I don't guess. They look like it. Is that a drive, or is that part of the public street going to Lot 11?
Yeah, Lot 15 is the only proposed flag lot. Lot 11 and 12 are regular lots by definition in the zoning ordinance.
And they would be served by a driveway, a private drive, not public right-of-way.
Okay. And, and it would be wide enough, obviously, for fire, whatever, to get through their emergency services?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Thoughts? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Is one of the conditions to the LDD that it goes with the PDD only? It can't be rezoned without?
It's not a condition, per se. I think what staff said was that our recommendation for the LDD is based upon a foreknowledge of that the city council would only approve both of them together. And I think that's what we would expect.
Well, the motion could be made that it, it would be predicated on the fact, in other words, this, this, if it's approved, would not, the approval would be negated if the LDD is not approved.
Planning commission motion could say that.
Yeah, recommendation to approve with staff comments. Well, it's, it needs to be a condition.
That's the PDD, that's the, yeah. But you're talking about the LDD request, right?
Yeah.
So I think what I understood you to say just now was that for the LDD rezoning, that planning commission could recommend to the city council that they, there's a recommendation for approval of the LDD with the, only with the approval of the PDD.
Correct.
You lose a lot of protection otherwise. I mean, that, to me, is
Well, it's, LDD is a pretty restrictive zone with two-acre lots and that sort of thing. But, and I doubt it would have any negative effect. But, yes, the PDD gives certain certainties there that it would have to, either way, if it changed for anything but single-family detached houses on the lots of the size that's specified here, whether it's the PDD or not, would have to come before this body to be resubbed by. Okay? With that, anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, to approve case 2022-013, incumbent on the approval of the PDD as well.
And the?
Appropriate way for that to be stated. There are no comments on this one. Conditions or any conditions on this?
No conditions, but there are comments. Okay? Motion's been made.
Second.
Approval, and now seconded. Is there a need for discussion of the motion or clarification of the motion? If not, then I will, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
Yes.
David, oh, sorry. Warren McCord?
Yes.
Nonette Race?
Yes.
Bob Brittenbach?
Yes.
Wendy Barmancam?
Yes.
Okay. That motion is carried. And we go to the next item, which is the Kent property plan and development district. Logan, are you going, is there any more for you to present for us on that one?
No, sir. I would just reiterate the discussion about connectivity. It is a recommendation right now in the staff report, which is not binding. So if there is a desire to require it or not require it, it would be helpful to staff to clarify that.
Are the connectivity, you talking about to, to Ogle Tree?
Yes, sir.
Connectivity to Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Or the open space?
The recommendations for the
Well, the, there were two things that I heard. One had to do with the easements related to access to the, the outlaw, open space.
Yes, there are four, there are four conditions, which would be binding if approved. The four conditions are, provide a outlawed or open space area in the, near Moores Mill Creek, which would be an amenity for the subdivision. The second condition is that no more than two driveways would be permitted on Ogle Tree roads. The third condition is that the only use permitted in the development would be single-family detached homes. And the fourth condition is that all lots would be at least two acres in size, with the exception of the outlaw. There's a recommendation from engineering to extend Kentwood to connect to Ogle Tree, which is not a binding condition unless you would desire it to be so.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a item from Water Resource Management that's listed under conditions as well. So just aware of that.
Okay.
Page five. And I, I would make one other comment. If you were concerned about, you know, the staff recommendation on the access, if you will, to the creek, you know, again, it's part of just a, an approach to have shared access for what could be considered an amenity, you know, to be able to access that area. We did not set aside a minimum size for that area. You know, we didn't say that it had to have to have the ability to run behind lots 11, 12 and 15. So, it was not defined specifically for that reason. And if you were concerned about that being an out parcel, that could easily just as be, as well be a, an easement for, you know, residents within the subdivision to have access back there. So, there are multiple ways to accomplish that, if you feel like that's a positive thing for the subdivision as proposed, and if you do, then that wording could also be modified.
I feel like this backs up to two or three different other kind of subdivisions. Are there other access points that are given on plots of this nature?
Sometimes when there's a trail that's proposed in the city, then we have a trail that we get an easement for. I don't know if I've been here long enough to see other examples of this specifically, so. As a PDD, it's not unusual in my background.
We still have to have a public hearing on this, but I want to clarify, I think I heard two different versions. One about connecting Kent, Kentwood to Ogletree. One indicated that was a positive thing, the other thought it would be a cut through to avoid the speed humps south or below Kentwood, between Kentwood and Ogletree, so.
I think what was said was that it would only be positive if it were Ogletree only and not Kentwood, not both.
All right, it, it requires a public hearing, so why don't we open the public hearing now again, and ask if anyone wants to address the PDD part with anything other than what may have been said before, feel free to come forward now. There's no one coming, so, oh, was there?
Yes, yes, please, I didn't see you, sorry.
I didn't say anything, but I'm going to. Um, I've been here before, and I'm on the other end of Kentwood, where y'all drowned me. This, I'm 741 Kentwood Drive, and my name is Deborah Newton. I'm on the other end of Kentwood, on the last lot that backs up to the creek. These three lots right here are going to be just like my lot, and they're going to be underwater. In the heavy rain this last week, it was well up into my yard, way up into my yard. It's not in my house, I am in a floodplain. I don't know why anybody would buy the lots, and if we're trying to conserve, and we're trying to have wetlands in this place, you're taking them out. You're, you're making these homeowners right here clean up after your floods, and that's what happens. We clean up. You cannot dredge, from my understanding is, the city does no longer dredge creeks. We don't, so they're not going to dredge them. They'll come behind it and clean up. We get all the stuff from the golf course, which this developer developed to, and put that other lot underwater. So, no guarantees that these lots aren't going to be underwater, just like mine. So, if you want to put an easement, yes. If you want to redefine this entire development, like Clay said, and they're unbuildable, they are, and it's only going to get worse, because soon as they cut that, it's going to drain. I don't know where they think it's going to drain, but it's going to drain to the creek, like it all does. And that's a seven-foot gully, people, that's not just a little stream right there that they're going across to get to those, it's a seven-foot gully, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, I spoke once already, but I wanted to come back.
It's a different, it's a different hearing, feel free.
Thank you. Because my neighbors reminded me of a few pieces of information I didn't pass on, and it has to do with the access that you spoke about earlier. There's numerous other neighborhoods, Shadowwood Subdivision, Willow Creek, Camden Ridge, the Preserve, all of those areas, we've been able to look up and see that it's got a similar sort of access to what's shown here, and we'd support that. Again, what we felt was best was Ogletree and out, but we could support this. And again, we feel like this is similar to these other types of developments we've seen, and we'll support that. But to punch through from Ogletree and, and come through that way is, it's a concern for us, and I just wanted to make sure and reiterate that with y'all, and let you know that, again, my, my neighbors prodded me a little bit to come back and say, hey, any questions about that? Thank you.
Any, anyone else? If there is no one, we'll close the public hearing at this time and continue our discussion. Is there any, from the developer or the staff, any, any response to anything that's said, heard in the public hearing? The, basically, the, for our discussion, the, the connectivity is always advocated, primarily because you need two ways in and two way out for public safety. There are two ways in and out of Winway, of course, you've got north, is it north? And south, I always thought it was, but anyway, you've got the, the, the main road through there has two access, so only these 15 lots will be the ones that could be cut off under some unusual circumstance. But anyway, is there any, any further discussion? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I wanted to discuss, Chairman, if I could, the first condition, so not the recommendation, but the first condition about providing the open space lot. Typically, I'm a big fan of that, and the bigger the better, but I don't think, first of all, I don't know that it's usable, or really functional as an open space lot, and then, secondly, I would agree that people with two-acre lots don't really need an open space lot, like those with much smaller lots, so I don't know that I'm really prepared to enforce that or vote for that as a condition. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Well, if it's an open space lot, the homeowner association has to maintain it, and if it's a part of lot 15 and 12, then the, the lot owners would have to maintain it.
And that's where I was with it. I thought this could potentially be changing, so I agree with you that it's not required, and I don't really feel like that's a thing that should have to be there, and by covenants based on these comments tonight, it may not stay, so I'm sure that that's a thing.
But if the rest of the lots, people in the rest of the lots do not have access to it, then is it a fair burden for them to have to maintain it as, as open space? So, you were talking about an easement access, some way where you're not...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I mean, one option, multiple options here. If you feel like it's a positive thing for the development, you know, there could be an easement across the lot that's granted to the HOA. The HOA could maintain it, and, you know, have the rights to that easement, however that's defined. That is a possibility.
Anyone make a motion? The hearing is closed, but... There is no homeowner association. Don't have a homeowner association.
Mr. Chairman.
You'll have one just for that, okay. That's enough, enough of that, Glenn, thank you. But I do, that raises an interesting question, but obviously, staff feels that this is a separate subdivision, or it would not be on our agenda at this time, so that's apparently a difference of opinion.
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve RZ 2022-014 with conditions 2, 3, and 4, with the addition of the word detached to condition 3, and the Water Resource Management condition as well.
Okay, is there a second? Second that motion or addition to?
I'll second now.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there a need to explain, clarify the motion?
Yes, please, I'd like to just know what, so effectively, what's going to happen if we remove that condition? What, what happens? Who, who, who controls the property? Is it going to be an individual, the people that buy 12 or 15, or who's going to maintain it?
Well, I don't know about that. He says HOA, the developer says HOA.
Yeah, it'd be the HOA, they'd have to take care of it.
But this was not, this was just to have, everybody have access to it, granting an easement back to this parcel.
That's what this is about.
Number one, uh-huh.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, for clarification, as I understand the motion was made, deletes condition number one, which means then that goes away. There, lot 12, 15, 11, those would all be individual lots that would be conceivably sold to private individuals who could build a house on them, so there would not be any easements, nothing else associated with that lot.
So, 16, the outlot gets absorbed, is that what you're saying then?
No.
No, 16 had nothing to do with condition number one. That was just a proposed out parcel as drawn by the applicant. It was a non-buildable lot, if you will.
Okay, does the motion then include it as an outlot, or incorporated into lot 12 and 15?
There are no stipulations, other than that it is not required for the condition number one as listed.
Okay, that helps. All right. The motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, I will call for a vote, and let's do a roll call, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
Sorry.
Warren McCord?
Yes.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Rittenbach?
Yes.
Wendy Barmanham?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made, motion carries, and we are now moving to Woodward Oaks PDD.
Just so everybody knows, the rezoning request will be heard by city council on February 21st.
Okay, let's, let's open now the agenda back up to Woodward Oaks PDD. Amber is going to make our presentation.
Yes, sir, gladly. Maybe?
Maybe.
Frozen.
Okay. This next request is for a PDD amendment to the Woodward Oaks PDD. Let's just keep going. Here is an aerial of the site. It is approximately 237 acres total. James Burke Parkway will run north to south through the development, and this amendment specifically covers Phase 5, which is located up here at the northern section of the PDD, near West Farmville Road. This is the third, this would be the third amendment to the PDD. The priors added office and commercial space, a fire station, and reallocated the distribution of residential uses within the PDD. And the current MDP shows 29 cottage housing units here located in Phase 5. The proposed MDP removes the cottage housing and replaces those units with 27 townhomes, and also, it reallocates the other two units into the future phases of development. There's also an amenity site added, shown in Phase 5.
Say what amenity that will be.
It does not, I believe the applicant may want to speak on that. There are, there's already one incentive with the PDD. PDD's are allowed two incentives and exchanges. The first that they, that is existing, they have a reduction in the front setback for, from 20 feet to 10 feet for residential lots not on James Burke Parkway, and for that, they provided parking in the rear for the office and townhouse uses. The office is located here on North Donahue. And they are requesting another incentive, which is to increase the ISR, not to exceed a maximum of 20% for, which would allow a maximum of 70% total for the single-family homes located on James Burke Parkway here with rear alley access, and also an increase in the ISR allowance for townhomes, which would allow an ISR of 80% for these units. Staff does support the proposed amendment, and we recommend approval with conditions. The MDP just requires some revisions that need to be made before we submit to city council, which will be scheduled for February 21st.
Thank you, Amber. Brett, would you have any thing to add?
I think Amber did a good job. I just want to answer, you asked about the amenity. So, we're going to do an amenity there, we're, we're, we're going to have a passive trail system in that area, for sure. We're having a placeholder for, like, a pool and bathhouse, okay? That is the, that's what we want to do. We built a large one in Phase 3 here, large pool, clubhouse, and parking lot. We're trying to prevent what we ran into MEMS Trail, where we wanted to come back and add a second pool, and we had to come back before you, and so, we want to be crystal clear on the front end that there may be a pool here, and we don't, you know what I mean, and we don't, so that's, that is the reason why we're, we're doing that. And just so you know, like, on the incentive exchanges, really, we're really not changing them, it's not like we're adding them. The previous incentive and exchanges were all similar. The only difference on the ISR one was, we added that in the previous time for the cottage housing area, and, and so, we didn't need it, but when we did that, as you come into Woodward Oaks now on the main boulevard, those are mainly 90 and 100-foot wide lots, setback from the streets and that kind of stuff. When we did these townhomes and are lining James Burke Parkway on the Farmville side, we're kind of creating this streetscape. So, what we did was, from the roundabout that's in now north, we previously showed street-fronted homes there with rear alley access. I forgot to add, to include the ISR to apply to those lots, because you're going to have a rear alley access, just more ISR on those lots, so that was something I'm cleaning up with this, but it's really all from the, pretty much the same thing before, so happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Brett? Okay, oh. See, are we having a hearing here? We do need a public hearing on this. So, we shall open the floor for a public hearing, if anyone wished to ask questions or raise any issues regarding this proposal, please do so now.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Peacock, I reside at 1621 James Burke Parkway. I have been a resident at Woodward Oaks, I was the second resident on James Burke Parkway, moved in back in August, a year and a half ago. When I moved in, there were a lot of promises made by the developer to me that I questioned thoroughly before I purchased my lot, before I signed my contract, that had fallen through. We've seen certain things like bike trails, those were promised to be built, over 10 miles of them, it's still being advertised on our website. The developer hasn't done that, that's been a private individual in the community that also maintains that as well. Our clubhouse, bathhouse has literally fallen apart. We have had siding fall off, we've had chunks fall off. We don't have lights in the pool, under the water. As someone who lost a child to a drowning, I guarantee you, that is a very major concern to me. I tried to address that with the developer, and it's been tossed to the wayside. There's a lot of things, our signage at the front doesn't work, the developer can't take care of what they've already promised. When I read about the PDD change, one thing that concerns me, according to the city's website, is the most flexibility for the developer. So far, our developer hasn't cashed in a lot of checks that they've written. There are a lot of things that were promised, as well as several of the other residents that were promised by the developer, hasn't come true. When I look at the new map, one thing that's concerning to me, there's no parking shown, and I know this isn't the final submission, the final rendering, but there's no parking for the new amenity building. That's something else I asked about when I purchased my lot, and I was told that, yes, that was already an existing part of what was out there in our subdivision, was a second pool area, so now I'm hearing that that might be a pool, it might not be. I also count the number of townhouse lots that have been created on the south side there, and that's far more than 29 units. and that's far more than twenty-nine units. According again to the webpage from our subdivision, it states that it's five hundred seventeen home sites. Now we're sitting here at five hundred and eighty. That's straight off their webpage, so I'm not sure where the discrepancy in the number comes from, but I figured I would point that out. I won't take up any more of your time, I know there's other residents there, but thank you for hearing my opinions.
Anyone else?
How y'all doing tonight? First, I'd like to say thank you for providing this forum to us to come before you tonight. I have to use notes, because I'm a rookie public speaker, and my brain goes...
You know what's your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Robert Hodgson, formal. I go by Bob. My wife is Ashley, and my wife and I live, or my family and I live at eight zero six Clear Spring Drive. I want to echo every sentiment that Mr. Drew just brought up. He was very accurate in what he said, and I think it speaks mainly to accountability and trustworthiness on behalf of the developer. There were just, you know, a lot of promises made, and few have been delivered, if you will, so I'll just get right into it. I didn't really see that the population density was affected, you know, by reading the documents, so that's a good thing. However, how it's designed creates a potential thoroughfare from Farmville Road to North Donahue. It just seems unsafe, as drivers already speed down James Burke Parkway, and the streets are fairly narrow, people park in the road, in the street, and we got a lot of kids that play out there, so, you know, speeding vehicles combined with blind spots, if you will, balls coming down the road, it just, it's just, it's just unsafe, I guess, in our opinion. And that's mainly due to the size of the rear lot in a lot of these homes. It's fairly small, so they play on the front yard. The Realtor, sales exec, or sales representative of the developer assured myself and the others that Miracle Road was going to be finished from North Donahue to Farmville, which would most likely address, you know, that particular concern, so I don't know if we can submit conditions for approval, but I'd like to, like for y'all to consider that as one, finishing Miracle from Farmville to North Donahue. In the amendment, a proposed item of the new plan depicts an additional amenity building. However, the language in the document is such as potential, most likely, et cetera, cause concern, because the language is very weak. In my profession, you have to have very strong language when you're committing to something, so we would like to see terms like "shall" or stuff like that seem more binding in that situation, more clearly defined what that amenity building's going to be. I know Mr. Baskin spoke to that, but, you know, when, when we're submitting plans, I understand that always concrete, but, you know, you want to submit something more solid, just in my opinion. Maybe that's just the industry that I'm accustomed to, but the reason for that concern is due to the various promises and assurances of more amenities, namely a playground for the children to play on just outside the model home, which hasn't surfaced. And the neighborhood, you know, is and was designed, I guess, you know, and marketed for that particular, you know, family life or whatever, I lost my place. Several buyers had to refuse or postpone closing to ensure certain items were addressed in their homes, I'm just speaking to the accountability here. Could more binding language, as well as more clearly defining the, I'm sorry. I think you get my point there, so I'll go to the next one. There appears to be direct access from the school to the neighborhood, and I'm not sure if that is vehicular access or if that's strictly pedestrian. I ask that because, and maybe Mr. Baskin can, can respond to that particular question, because the reason I ask that is if it's drivable, is there any way to proposition developer to modify this access to pedestrian, only as a condition of approval? Seems that, it seems that would drastically increase vehicular traffic, traffic through the neighborhood, because you could exit the school, drive through the neighborhood, and access North Donahue more easily. However, if you finish Miracle Road, it would give and made that pedestrian, they could exit the neighborhood and take either Miracle or North Donahue, and I feel, I feel like that would address, you know, any type of traffic issues through the neighborhood. I know there was a study performed, I didn't have that study available. I appreciate y'all sending out the little placard, because that's the only reason I know about this. However, I received it last Wednesday, and, you know, I've been out of town for the past few days, it just, it didn't give me a whole lot of time for repair, so shooting from the hip here, you know what I mean? I believe those are all my specific concerns, other than, you know, if the developer were to recommend, you know, like speed bumps, or I know we've got some traffic circles in here as a way to control traffic. I mean, those typically only serve, in my experience, as local hindrances. After, after that hindrance, it becomes, you know, the back straightaway at Talladega. They just take off, you know, just put it to the floor. Again, I thank you for your time and the opportunity. This far, it's been a pleasurable experience, so thank you very much.
All right. Although we do not get involved in enforcing the breach of contracts or whatever within, whether, between the homeowner and the developer, I am interested in Brett answering a couple of quick questions. One is about the access to the school. The other is the, well, we're talking about speed mitigation. Well, that's, that's a process that we have, that you can go through and you can talk to Allison, you can explain to him about that, what you have to do to, if, if there's a speeding problem on your major thoroughfares, on how to mitigate that. But there was another, what was another one? Nanette, did you have one? The, just overall, should we be, we can enforce these things, but I don't see any need in, in adding to a, a PDD that is not functioning well if it's going downhill. I don't know what our legal rights would be to do that, but, but I'm speaking to Brett, you can...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your excuse.
Chairman, do we need to close the public hearing? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess we do. Does anyone else wish to speak before I close the public hearing? Getting weary.
Not good at public speaking. I'm Lauren Maxwell, or Catcher, sorry, Maxwell's maiden name. I live on sixteen oh five Jimison Place, one of the first people that moved into the neighborhood. Again, like he said, I'm not sure if any of this affects what you guys are deciding here, but promised a lot of things, not a lot, they changed things constantly, and this seemed like, again, I got this in the mail, thank you for sending it, because otherwise it just comes across as they like to change things for whatever fits their purposes. Again, amenities, like the language, needs to be clear for us, what are they actually going to be providing, and I also agree with the school, if it's going to connect, like, safety-wise, drivers coming through our neighborhood, connectivity issues, so, sorry, not a strong public speaker, but just, I felt strongly enough to come to this and actually say that I oppose their change for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, thank you for seeing us. I'm Jerry Collet, fifteen ninety Jimison Place, one of the original residents at Woodward Oaks. I can reiterate everything that has been said before about a lot of empty promises, a lot of things that have been proposed, playgrounds that were supposed to be built, and they're not being built based on space, things of that nature. I have personally started a, a committee to help the HOA, so basically a committee that manages our management company, which the board is our builder, which I feel is a conflict of interest, but, so, developed a committee to manage our HOA company that manages our neighborhood, because we have had continuing problems since day one. Lots of empty promises, you know, the language, one thing, definitely stronger language, the amenity building, what exactly is that? Parking, we're having, so the language definitely needs to be, you know, strengthened, exactly what they're going to be doing. Are they going to finish Miracle Road? When we moved in, they're saying they were going to finish Miracle Road. We do not need our neighborhood as a thoroughfare. It is, we already have an issue, and once they build, finish that school, that will be an even bigger issue. And will that be a walking path to the school, or it be cars? So we definitely need to get that clarified. Like they mentioned about our clubhouse and things of that nature, the pool, it's been a continuing problem of getting anything done with the developer. They're, they build houses quickly, and then that's pretty much it, and leave, you know, us to take care of trying to get these problems fixed. So a little bit more control on what exactly they're going to be doing would be, would be beneficial to our neighborhood. We bought into this neighborhood mainly for the walking trails, so, and with all the building, we're also having some flooding issues just crossing over the bridge on North Donahue. I have watched Sagahatchee Creek, I think the Sagahatchee Creek, grow when it rains, you know, twenty-five yards outside of its banks, to now, if you drive by it today, it's almost a hundred yards outside of its banks. So we're having, we're going to have some flooding issues. On the walking trails, which I frequent regularly, we're having flooding issues because there's very poor management of the water. They're doing the scrape development, taking all the trees away, and leaving it for an extended period of time, that water's got to go somewhere. So, and we're having continuing issues with that, so that definitely needs to be addressed. We've already lost part of our trail, because they've crept the neighborhood into the trails, which is built by a private person, not by the builder. It's been done completely by a resident of our neighborhood, all volunteer, so, but they advertise it as their development. So those are my main concerns, and I appreciate your time.
Anyone else? You've spoken one to a customer, I'm afraid. Anybody else, though, wish to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing, and ask the staff or the representative to address some of these issues. Brett?
Yeah, which ones? Well, I mean, a lot of these, you know, I'm not the builder, I don't, I can't address a lot of them. You know, I guess in regards to, you know, you asked about access to the school, so that hasn't changed from the previous layout, right? It's, there's, there's vehicular and pedestrian access to the school through that, through that side, there's a...
Vehicular and pedestrian.
Yeah, there's a roundabout there that's connecting that all through. So that, that, that was all planned to be there. In regards to Miracle Road, Miracle Road is, is, Miracle Road is, is going away. I mean, Miracle Road will exist from North Donahue to this county road where the, where the little pointer's at right now, but the rest of Miracle Road is, is vacated and rerouted, and essentially, James Burke Parkway is the, the connector road that's through there. That, that has been from day one, none of that's changed. Now, a portion of Miracle Road did loop through this site, and one of the first things that they did was straighten out Miracle Road through there, you know, kind of just north of Sayer Lane, up through there. They relocated a portion of Miracle Road. That was done, you know, at the very beginning of the project, so I can speak on that. I guess in regards to traffic, you know, speeding and that kind of stuff, there is a raised crosswalk. I don't think the raised crosswalk is in yet, because they're not done with that phase, but there is a raised crosswalk that goes in right around Clear Springs, right around phase three, and then you have the roundabout that is, that's about halfway. We do have this new roundabout that we'll be putting in, but, you know, there's other speed control that'll take place along James Burke Parkway. In regards to that amenity area over there, yes, there'll be parking, you know, there will be parking over there. There is, the plan at this time was for a, a pool, a, a pool and a bathhouse, but not a clubhouse, is what we were looking at there. In regards to playground, playground equipment and all that other stuff, I, we, we don't have any of that stuff mentioned, and we've never have in our documents. I don't know what has been promised or whatnot, I, I can't speak on that. In regards to our, like, our lot count changing, we've never asked for an increase of lot count, the lot count's been five eighty the whole time. Is there any, any specific ones you want me to address that I was trying to write them down as I was going?
I think you've covered the ones that I've caught.
Yeah, I have. No, I said yes.
Oh, and I know the trail, the bike trails. All right, so the bike trails, it's been my understanding that they had a, an agreement with the, with the, I think there's a five oh one C three corp, it's, I think it's not sore, it's one of the bike riding...
Camp.
Yeah, camp. Camp, you know, they've been dedicating the easements, and Camp has been building these, these bike trails on their property, or, you know, through this area, and that's how I always understood that it was going, and we were, we were dedicating the property and dedicating the easements, but Camp was building these things. Beyond that, I, you know, I mean, I can't, you know, I can't answer. You know, there was, you know, it's my understanding that bike trails are going to go up a majority of the property, that's why we have a lot of these cutout areas and stuff for it to get back towards the, the subdivision and such, so we can, we'll work on plotting, you know, where the existing ones are now to update for the comments on the master plan, and where the planned future ones are going. I, I can show those, but that's, that's what I know on the bike trails.
Do you know how many miles exist?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I have a question, Brett.
Yeah.
I know that this is where you're putting your two new lots, right? It changed a lot from that, and I remember in packet, Allison mentioned this connectivity is better.
Yeah, we'd have a finger, yeah, we'd have a, we'll, we'll put a finger back out to, to that, that's not a big deal. That's not a big deal. That's not a big deal at all. Part of our detention for this phase comes over there, so we had to kind of squeeze that side over, is why we kind of reorientated that area over there, but that's not a problem, we can do that.
Thank you.
I will add a comment, that the unit count did actually increase. It was originally five seventeen, and then with the latest amendment, they added twenty-nine cottage units and thirty-nine townhomes for five eighty.
The previous, previous time, the previous time. So when we, when we went from the cottage housing amendment, that's right, you are correct, it went from five seventeen, when we, when we changed the housing type back here to the cottage housing type in the townhome, the previous time, it did go up.
Amber, can you, reminds me exactly what constitutes a cottage housing type? Doesn't have to be you.
It's just, yeah, it's just, we have performance calls for whether it's single-family, twin-house, duplex, townhome cottage style. The cottage style is more of where houses in no more than ten cluster around a common green space.
Gotcha.
And they're kind of inward-facing, and there's kind of a, a common open space in the, in the middle, they can be done as fee simple or in a condo ownership.
Gotcha.
But that's the, the look and feel that, that we're, that, that the cottage housing requirements encourage, that's what they're trying to get at. And that's what we were doing before, it's just, there was double road frontages, and it was crazy, we were trying to do them fee simple, we were, it, it got, there's really no defined fee simple cottage housing done in Auburn. We've done it condo style, but we tried to do it fee simple, and it was very difficult, and we couldn't, we, we just, it just became infeasible, so that's, that's kind of why we're just going back to, to the townhomes.
All right, any other, any other questions?
Yes, for engineering, I do have one. Since James Burke Parkway is a public street, what other options do we have to mitigate traffic that could be added, or is it just complaint-driven, or?
This development was actually planned to have traffic calming installed as the phases are being built, so that's what's been going on. They're actually, there's a series of speed humps, roundabouts, and raised crossings that will be installed, excuse me, along James Burke Parkway, as part of the development to help mitigate the traffic. So it should, in theory, take care of itself as the phases are built.
Okay, and that's a requirement for permitting, so if it's not done, there's, permitting won't happen, or what are the holding?
Yes, they submit the traffic calming as part of the DRT plans when appropriate. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anything else? Well, is there anyone prepared to make a motion? Motion? Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve RC 202215. Or send to Council.
With conditions and modifications.
With, with conditions and modifications.
All right, motion's been made to recommend for approval. Second to that?
Second, sorry.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the City of Auburn.
Good evening. Closing out the agenda this evening is a request from the City of Auburn for the Public Safety Training Facility. It is located on Highway 280, just north of North College Street. The property is rural and was annexed last month. It's approximately nine acres. And the request is for conditional use approval for a public service use, specifically a municipal facility. And the public safety training campus will consist of a, uh-oh, a, I'm trying to pull, there we go, a classroom and meeting space building and then several exterior facilities that will be used for training, such as a burn building, drafting pit, a rappelling tower, and I think a radio tower, among other apparatuses. We do recommend approval and we did not receive any correspondence on this. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? I accumulated so much pressure and paper up here, I've lost my agenda.
There is a public hearing.
There is a public hearing required on this, I assume, since it is a, a conditional use. So, I'll open that now. Is there anyone wish to address the proposal for an Auburn Public Safety Training Center? And I think not, so I'll close the hearing and is there any discussion needed from staff?
Move to approve CU 2022061.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded and multiple times. Then, call for the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And it has been approved. Now, we've got some other business, but I can't find my limited agenda with all that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, here it is somewhere. Here it is. Here it is. Other business. Yeah, we have one item of other business, I think, is election of officers. So, I will open that business meeting and open the floor to motion. We've got three officers, officers. The chairman, the vice chairman and the secretary will take the, we can take the chairman first and do as you wish.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that if the three current presiding officers are willing to continue to serve, I would make a motion that for the coming year that those three be nominated to fill those same three positions they're currently filling.
Second.
Second.
Well, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Do you agree?
It's ironic, well, it's ironic, it's ironic that we had this business meeting, election of officers, right after this meeting, I'll say that.
Giving you second thoughts, isn't it?
But anyway, I guess so. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And the motion carries. Chairman's communication, he has no chairman, has no communication. What about staff? Any?
No comments this evening, thank you.
No comments this evening. All right, and then if that's the case, I'd wear this meeting adjourned. I think I've got to do this. Thank you, Chairman.